Everyone, welcome to the meeting quarter and welcome all our guests this evening. We can see the chairs pretty well. Well, then, first of all, lengthy game, but acknowledge to know we are in big role, the ancestors and obviously the territory people. First of all, we have on the agenda is a presentation of Summer Street. Uh, Bob Bennett and Lisa Flair and John Trellis is all with us, so they're step up to that one there and uh, ladies and gentlemen. We have fifteen minutes to present.
All right, I'll go fast. The word that I'm trying to make it, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Uh, I've got a busy schedule, we appreciate your time. Uh, we're gonna uh, speak with you about an exciting project that we're uh, want to share with you um, on a closed environment agricultural facility, otherwise known as Greenhouse. So that's what we're gonna talk about. Liz has been the project lead on this for us for a couple of years and John's been managing the project for the last year. They all know all the details that certain questions that you may have, but I think you're gonna be able to be interested in. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for joining us, uh, you guys have a good time with our project this evening. So Summer Street, uh, realized a few years ago that we are reaching a credible playing a facility to begin with standard programs and services. So I continue, we are continuing to cope with the economic and uh, social challenges that have come with the impacts of COVID and with the pandemic entire on the other recent years. So it's crucial for our organization to adapt to and provide services in our interactive community and place food security as part of our operations. The greenhouse is a strategic investment that will stimulate transformative change and increase community capacity, creation of a unique agricultural facility as a focus equity, diversity, inclusion, as well as environmental responsibility. The project creates an opportunity for collaboration between sectors, including uh, Community's Cultural Heritage, Department of Community Services, Agriculture and Business. This community asset will provide agricultural producers with leasable production space, consumers with access to free locally grown produce, and Summer Street, Summer Street uh, participants with programming, training and employment. The facility will be able to bring maximum standards for accessibility, both environmentally sustainable technologies. The intention is to uh, create a replicable, replicable model for other social purpose organizations, for other like-minded organizations or communities that would like to create sustainable production. So Summer Street, as you know, provides uh, opportunities and uh, training for adults and potential disabilities, but we see ourselves as a resource sharing community and this project will help us further support their community. So as far as uh, business investment, uh, we allow local producers to put, various producers locally that benefit from this, but they wouldn't just be growing their own businesses or providing employment opportunities for people with potential disabilities who traditionally have a hard time in the trade workforce. Um, they also just really enjoy working in gardens, you know, getting a gain of charity and um, criticism. So our project has been uh, that we have worked for about three years at this time. We had, we just started getting going and working with us. Uh, but we've made a lot of uh, progress with the uh, development of the uh, facility. Uh, there's a business plan that was funded through um, the uh, investment readiness program, which is a federal uh, program that's social finance, uh, who funded the development of uh, mechanical and structural drawings to the facility and we're currently undergoing um, an energy modeling uh, exercise with the engineering firm. And um, I think that would have some summary of what we're trying to do here. Uh, other than to say that the Department of Community's Cultural Heritage has funded one third of this project and the uh, our own Summer Street Foundation has committed another third of the funding. We have an open uh, application to a court at the moment to complete the final third of the funding for the project. So it is in theory fully funded at this point and first of all, if you're stoked, but it has been designed for Summer Street's land, although we uh, recognize that that comes with many limitations inside of challenges. We would like to create as many opportunities with this project as possible, which is why we've been in the municipality today to request space that is kind of naked or.
For folks, we're going to use John Trellis, um, to just speak a bit on the construction side of things. So once we have the space that uh, is more suitable and adding to a bit of uh, this is on the center, um, the space at Summer Street had posed a few restrictions from the set by boundaries and such, and uh, we see the property that we've seen in Riverton will present some opportunities for expansion, future expansion, better range, uh, and these future partnerships out in that area. So uh, just wanted to add a structure piece. So as mentioned, we're working with a company right now, an engineering firm, just to give us an energy model. And what the energy model uh, will do is come back, there are three options, so we'll have three options. It's a vertical geo exchange, which would be a uh, geothermal, but that closed loop system vertical. Um, secondly, that gives a GAT system, which is a ground-to-air heat transfer. So similar idea, but large piping under the ground moving air versus uh, water through heat exchange. And then thirdly, basically an air source heat pump system. So by utilizing this uh, this model, uh, or this firm, they're gonna give us the option to take that information back, work with actors and then look at what's the best sustainable home term and most efficient unit of criticals facility once it's built. So that's kind of step one for us and then uh, just to give you a rundown where we are currently, um, so we've got to find a location, of course, that's final, we've got some site servicing plans and such to make that uh, work with our infrastructure. Um, secondly, we'll take the energy model, make that decision on how we can actually include this facility so it works the best for uh, all, all year round, this is an all year round facility. Um, and then work with their architectural firm, which is where roots, they're gonna just finalize the detail of these drawings. Once that uh, is done in mechanical, like, and be completed, we're then gonna put this project over to the tender, the public tender process, which would be, that's very bad ones. Probably put some kind of a, a strong invitation to that, um, similar with other projects that we try to utilize local, make local resources as best we can with this destruction material and all that kind of stuff, which are important, support our local, for local groups, especially if it's old and old and such. Uh, and then once we have the confirmation that we're being there, fully funded, um, I'd be still happy to share with you some of the things that we've been doing. So I say it's actually getting so, so, so it's pretty exciting all the way around. And I just want, I had a few more little notes I should kind of mention. Um, as far as building materials, we're using the National Park and Code. Uh, the overall facility, just as a ballpark, is around forty thousand square feet, but I think that consists of the three, as I said, you see there, pushing in the range from two to three thousand square feet per building, um, and remaining header, I have to see them on the backside there. And uh, yeah, so that's, that's pretty much a rundown of where we are at this point, so.
Thank you very much. That was a good one. I think that's.
No worries, bro. Questions, I ask, try to answer in class if you have.
Yes, uh, thank you very much. I just had a question there, but I think what's happening. Last question, Slary?
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, I guess my question is regarding uh, your energy modeling, uh, considering geothermal, did you explore any other sites? There are a lot of flooded lines around Stellerton and Westfallen, and uh, that would be a great source for a geothermal energy source.
Yep.
Did you consider any other, any other sites uh, in that area where, where you can tap into that energy?
Um, it's speaking with, so we have a wrath of engineering, just doing the understanding level on this. And uh, it's interesting, we, in the last, as we talked about this, we thought about these, these mines and valpites and we did an entire bound, there's a ton of that, in the past. Um, they are working a lot in this area, uh, the Glasgow and, and basically what he told us in the last, I mean, there's not enough information yet that they've uh, derived from the studies that they're currently doing. And they wouldn't recommend that this one, that we go down that road, because it's kind of putting unknown, so there's some, a lot of cost implications with unknown. Some of the other systems that they, you know, like the vertical system is, is a known product, is, is efficient, is um, the gas system as well, utilizing water, it has stuff like that, it's all system with uh, all energy process, so.
Did you consider North Scottish Power? I live in Abercrombie and uh, when I was a kid, um, Easter froze uh, right from Trenton down in the harbor, but uh, now if we look into the river, it's open and pretty well all winter because of Scottish Power, fire all their hot water into the river.
Yep.
And keeps uh, keeps the river open all winter. So there's a whole lot of energy being used there, used there, that's not used, so. To me, uh, it was always something that I would, uh, that would be a great place for a greenhouse, is that take all that waste water, the Scottish Power, and use to the green. Was that ever considered?
That's, I don't think we've thought anything on that, because one, yeah, and the location whether we could provide some of that stuff for it.
So, uh, next question was, uh, you could, okay, the most.
Well, mine's more of an opinion than a question. Um, knows up in Ottawa, uh, a conference in uh, in such me in, in twenty sixteen, uh, I was to some of the schools and they have greenhouses in them and then something else. And I think we're way behind in time not having something like this, so really, I commend you, so like you're doing things for coming to me.
David, uh, Gus, Nate, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm part of speaking at the moment, first of all, is uh, as the chair of the board of the Review of Dallas National Center. We heard this presentation and considerably far detail uh, every December. And um, and Summer Street industry deals with, so people would deal with, people with developed facilities, so that's one reason why we're interested. We have potential clients who could be employed in such an effort. The other reason we're interested is to be some energy exchange that could be available. Uh, the building, which was almost renovated about decade ago, it's gonna repair, uh, maybe that uh, Review of Dallas National Center will be obligated to leave there at some point because of the interest to move uh, to move residents to the uh, community. We have on site in Jason's three, eight units uh, group homes, that's twenty four people obviously, um, and then some of them are just looking at what, but that building that was renovated does not have air emission, as we know, Mr. Castor, uh, Turner mentioned there, climate is changing, uh, it works both ways, it's cheaper to heat your home this kind of weather, but it's also hard to spend it to cool your home, to line those and so on, but that's just, that's just said, but up there, it's very, very hot. So we're often had uh, an opportunities to lose some energy, say, to cool that building and maybe reduce our heating though by times as well. Uh, so that's why I'm speaking in favor of us having left this proposal. Uh, as most of you are aware, the county wants a large block of land there, some of which has been leased, but the lease is up, we're nearly up, that they've gone, oh, just within the time, there was uh, no one's particularly clear, but the line is uh, a structure which should be located as close as possible to the uh, may not in every review, uh, if we say, but it would require, if we are to find and transfer some land to them, uh, it would require certainly, exactly, who owns what, some of it's home, other it'd be home garden, some of it's all, it's better if you can, and uh, the piece in there, probably most interested in probably is that asylum, that's a consideration. Speaking in favor of the proposal, uh, it's been keeping around for three or four years, uh, they've got most of their backs in roll. I asked them to come here, but I have to report that each of the councils hear the proposal. Thank you.
Thanks, David, uh, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming tonight. Sounds like a great, uh, great project. And my question was, honestly, how much land are you looking? Let's figure if we find three acres to a new, forty acres?
Much as we can get, to be honest.
And uh. How much would you need for future expansion?
So that's, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. We have a, we have a commercial, cement, commercial interest in terms of what we may be able to produce from there. Their uh, their, their concern is whether or not we're gonna have the capacity. Our existing site, there is no like expansion, once we go, that's what we look at. But uh, out there, um, in Riverton, there's a lot for room to expand. And there was a, there was a plot of land that, but on the, the identified section that perhaps I.
I was a little bit lucky, that's why, I was kind of wondering how much.
Yeah, yeah, so uh, you know, John might be able to say more to, to what we need as if, but, but, but room for expansion would be very helpful. From that, and like, and of course, our, our colleagues at the Urban Corporation, that will take them, okay, see what they're heat, uh, are very, very interested in us being that close, um, and very interested in collaborations that will happen because of that.
But they know that the, it's online here, it's, it looks like a clear distance from the whole itself, is it? No, it's not that far.
No, it's uh, it's adjacent, um, and uh.
Yeah, and this picture is just adjacent there. Where are you at that? Who want the words, can you let me get it? Uh, I don't know.
I do good, it's six five zero three nine seven plus two is a big number.
That's not wrong. Anyway, that's the partial language, so.
Yeah.
And what did, is it, how many acres?
It's just twenty-one, it does have road frontage, um, so it should come in as well. Yes, it does show that it has some road frontage there and yeah, it looks like, if you go properly online, it looks like it might have about three hundred feet of road frontage. And then it's kind of a five bridge that goes up toward the uh, the home there and it looks like it narrows off at maybe seventy-eight feet, just from doing some measurements online. And then the large parcel, it's up, it'd be fine, but which is kind of very close to the home on the back side there, so. And just, just my thoughts on that, like depending, we could, we could, depending on cooperation, agreement or whatever, you know, access to that, that could be for the personal down the road and a road brought up or driveway and access, uh, and or, uh, you know, for access, keep the road, it's something to access the property, that's the right of life, so. Yeah, should be great partnership opportunity as well, so.
Just on that, is that uh, the wind now, is that, is that low? Is that enough?
That's partially.
Partially. So you had access to that?
Um, no, we wouldn't, no, there's, this site looks like it doesn't, it's not processed at the last, it's not, it's still.
Okay. Thanks, David. Uh, Cam, it's good one.
Thanks. This before you hire someone to work their funding with a lobby is because weight on this map is out there. One that's measured out, computers where the new value view is gonna be with the road frontage, so that land's already gonna be huge, but, and she said it will make a land, we have a lease to put, homes to stay around. And that could change, and there's actually lots of room there, but did they not think anything about putting a break down behind the, the former, what the review hall?
That's where we would like to put it.
I was wondering, so it's not, it's not.
Is it wrong?
Anyway, you were about fifty years behind, you've got fifty years to go until the auction sale and they had everything. They had the farmer, they had cattle, it was self-sufficient and the stuff all went away. Jack was like, did that auction sale too? They couldn't hear share cattle there, trying to. But anyway, that was then, and it's too bad it takes fifty years of planning and changes to come back to the same thing, okay? But hey, but I'm just coming to throw that in there since I'm a historian tonight.
Thank you. Agent Review, gone into that question, or do you want to?
Yeah, I had a look at this map, definitely not, there is a merit associated with the hall, and uh, they, they have land requested, the last three letters, T E D, they're always exactly on top, there's a. Say, yes, if, would it do, that's not what's watching, that's what we're afraid. My understanding, we met in a month and a half, there was this, it's, you know, they referred to, it's supposed to homes would get the reason, the no problem, right, as they pass through, they drive this in with their house. But that's to be determined, we didn't determine how much land they need, uh, where the test site is for the benefit of you people and the benefit of the home. But uh, I'm suggesting it's, the, you see, it's about the kind of effecto, but those two laws are, that is, it's what we're talking about, this is, this is, this is, this is the lane, that's, that's the group policies, that's beyond the, you can see a couple of other shares that we have, that, that sort of line was crossed, that's probably the, that's probably the law for reviews, just teams in that area, they're not, they're, they're. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation, uh, special team. Put your hands up. Okay, John. Okay. Or where? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, from the discussions, I mean, we do need to do some more look for the values, just who owns what land and what land is wanted, because what CEO said was a land right behind River View, we don't own, belongs to River View. That piece right there, uh, is not on the kind of vector when you, if, uh, you mentioned the, where the two hogs are, that's exactly where the, where the village is proposed to own, so that land is always taken there. Uh, if you went back to the land requested, it seems to be a lot easier for the home, uh, there is a question of the area ground in there, so the, the question in the area as to just what land is being requested, it's just two homes, uh, so some of that's gonna have to be, the area barriers of that, if we come up with a piece of land, whether it's right behind River View and they own it, fine, uh, that, that's up to them, but if it's owned by the county, it's up to us, but we have to be careful not to put it on area grounds, not to have where the new value bill is going to. But I had a couple of other questions or concerns I wanted to ask. Obviously, I've been in the greenhouse business for about fifty years and the, I, I look at this and I say, who would have this to have? The uh, so I think the figure was mentioned around fifteen thousand square feet in total, and that was counting the head rubs, the greenhouses are twenty-five hundreds of square feet each.
In that range, uh, currently they're like approximately thirty by eighty, some sizes like that.
Right, uh, but that's, you know, considerable size, but, but not all that much. The head rubs is it, is it, uh, is just for work, it's, it's not for growing, it's, it's no light coming in there, that's closed off.
No, the shipping receiving, like a wash station, a cooler, walk-in cooler.
And we're, they're built so those can be see-through or, yeah, glass or, flexed glass, whatever now to result in that. And if you're doing work, people like to work in daylight, people like to work in natural light, uh, it's what's usually been found in their, uh, you know, the greenhouse is asking you pretty warm, of course, uh, at certain times of year, and so you have to be careful of that for workers as well. And uh, and did I hear a total cost of two point, something, three point?
Three point five.
Three point five?
Yeah.
But so that's, yeah, I, I realize it's for a good purpose, I'm not trying to criticize this, just to give you my opinions, is that, you know, no private grower could ever think of the, you know, for that many square feet, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, you're gonna try many dollars, they, they have to do it for furnace and van, but I realize it's for a different purpose than simply, uh, paying the dollar, just that way. Uh, I think the business plan, I, I don't know what your business plan is like, you know, there's topic, some private people using it, the sun and space and providing some of the work, but having to be very closely looked at, I think, uh, the, a similar to this was tried, uh, and it wasn't for the same client system, so again, I'm not trying to sort of go wild, I'm just trying to put this up there for context. It was tried with commercial nations in, over Melbourne, and uh, the government was basically built, we never talked about our money here, uh, really nice, uh, about fifteen, twenty years ago now, maybe, uh, the fact that a fund was tore at one time, and everybody was very jealous, really, you know, everything was top notch, you know, everything ran automatically and whatnot, but it didn't go, it didn't go financially, uh, so it ended up being leased out to some private, private greenhouse owner, and, and I don't think it operates today, but it did have, even the water was pulled back up, there was fish and stuff, it was pretty interactive thing, but uh, just to be careful that, with, with that many dollars, you can, a lot of fancy stuff in, uh, you know, for fifteen thousand square feet, but I realize it's not for a money-making purpose, it's for, for unemployment. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention from a business point of view, uh, is you have to be careful, uh, if you have growers going in there and using, prior to this, if it's an incubator, they're getting new growers started and they move on with their own. I don't think it'll upset too many people, but if all of a sudden they're producing products in competition to people in, with their own greenhouses behind on their own properties, uh, and that's upsetting the market in any way, then, then you'll get complaints in a hurry of, you know, repeating with lower costs. Uh, so whatever is done business by the way, I think if it involves private business, has to be done in such a way it doesn't upset the aftercare, that they're paying for their space, same as for the local greenhouse usually be paying for their own. I think that's something I'll be watch for, strangely providing, uh, you know, the uh, space for the people to work and whatnot, but we have to be careful not to upset private industry at, at the same time. Uh, I think that should be done as long as people are aware of that. Uh, the final comment on my question, chairs, these are where their space will hurt, which is really important. Uh, I've been, I lost an apiary house, it's a snow load, you know, what it's like, if you can't get in there with a snow load or whatever, uh, you have to do it all by hand. So if they're gonna be open all year, that makes it easier because you've got some heat in there. Uh, it's when they're unheated that you're far out of the lusa, uh, but you mentioned in terms of local, you know, private, uh, or whatnot, there really are no, you know, structures, so for the mandatory locally, you don't care, or the closest, and there's some that are built much more for snow regions, uh, they're the ones for the heavy snow regions. You know, so there's all kinds of little things that they can mention, but I'm not gonna go on and on, but I, I think the one about the business is really important, if you're putting that many dollars in, then uh, it's like they look at the one in Melbourne and say, wow, I don't think of this, uh, so not to upset that marketplace, that should be, be quite, we're looking a lot more as an incubator than as, you know, incubators that could rather have their own greenhouse, you know, produce there, and that I think is very upset the aftercare. Now, I'm more than incubator project, anything I can do in a couple of years, I don't know, but the land, I think we have to be careful, there seems to be some confusion here on land. Thank you. That's constant.
I will listen when you go back for a whole bunch of speakers, everything's been said. My only, my only compliment would be. The concept's great, and you, you obviously did work, looking for money, so that's close to you. Um, I guess my only thought is, is should you, it's such a cool thing, should this be stuck in the back of, on the back, back forty sort of thing, or should this be somewhere where everybody can see it, cause it's a good, good store. on the back, back forty sort of thing, or should this be somewhere where everybody can see it, because it's a good store? Like that's, and I don't know where that, that place is, but that's my only thought of location here. Sorry, I think she, everybody should see it every day.
Sandy, answer Elliot.
Uh, the morning, we've already answered the question.
Okay, answer it.
Thank you, I was wondering if Brian could put up the picture that moment is on computer here for people to know. We're speaking. You don't want to do a whole lot till you find out where you're gonna be, right? And that's the most important thing, is that paper that we're passing down is at the back and I'm, I'm just gonna walk down the shore just to you three.
Why do they not do that? Don't do that, I was like.
Yeah. Just for your health.
Yes, it's for your health.
Hey, thank you very much for the presentation and
I just wanted to add there, I just checked on online and it does appear that River View owns all the land adjacent. Therefore, on the transaction, so it's River View, but it's always just for the county to inform. I suspect that the county is leasing something up. Actually, that's for a while.
I'm not River.
We were leasing what is owned to the county. Uh, River to River View. Uh, there is a portion of the land that is cleared there, that's not, we don't lease that, our land is specific to what was owned by the county police.
Okay, so somebody's, somebody's thought of this idea. But anyway, if it's, if it's in, it's maybe. Thank you.
Hey, Anna, thank you for making the presentation. And if we can figure out the land, our, our staff will look at it and see, actually, lots of the old, the old, the people go from there, we'll send that information over to the council. Well, thank you, we deal with the river though instead, but if you're glad when you're, never said people help with their trouble, say.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next we have is the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. Dear municipal council, thank you for the opportunity to address council regarding improvements to the exhibition grounds at the Pinkberry Agriculture Society that plans to undertake. If you may be aware, these are not the exhibition grounds at the very core condition. Accessible for storage. It is slowly deteriorating. According to the area, far in the last two years, it was called the guy who was in the video, telling you that it's sorry, isn't it?
They even have ten percent of that.
Can you open the mic just a little bit? Because that mic's not going off.
You're going to do it?
I don't know if it's coming off, but it's down, they can't.
That's both, but, but possibly, yeah.
I said, oh, the other one's really loud compared to that. Too bad. One, that's out. It's a three five on the third girl. It's not like. So I would just be, like, double A.
Yes. For two stars. You come up here.
Still look up, here the shield, you win.
Yeah, just keep raising the mic.
Yeah.
Yeah, just keep raising the mic. We have a green light. It's on you.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
You don't want me to shut it off. Hear me in the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the council regarding improvements to the exhibition grounds at the Pinkberry Agriculture Society that plans to undertake. If you may be aware, in the meantime, on the exhibition grounds, it's irrigated in a very poor condition. It's not suitable for running on the storage anymore, we're on the safe side. Also, when I saw also the exhibition land surrounding everything. Looking at the future, age of the exhibition is a brutal issue for the county. If the ground society even began planning to replace it building with a Hummerburg building structure. This newly constructed will have the possibility to host being cheaper or shows on radio and equipment storage. The head of the science society uses a new structure beneficial for all citizens and the community of the county that's built and we expect, we expect to read request funding from the municipality to assist construction of the Hummerburg building. The estimated cost is one hundred and fifty thousand. The labor raise in my other funding partners or the director is requesting ninety thousand dollars from municipal council to be allocated over a two-year period for a time of their choosing. Adventure commission would allow the project to last for the society to complete it over the next two years, start November twenty twenty-two. For over a hundred thirty years, the agricultural society has continued to bring the growing of the ground. Maturities provide changes that will continue to keep the changes needs of exhibition that's been found. Order directors of the Pinkberry Agriculture Society here in the municipal council, they continue to support over many years, it would be appreciated.
Thank you, Jack. Now, we'll open up the questions. Question? Amy, that's a perfect.
Thank you, uh, Chair. This is a, you know, tearing on the same building, the same site?
Yes.
You.
Chair, um, I know it's been a big support of the exhibition, this council's always been supportive of the exhibition. Uh, and it's been on, I know, thin ice for the last number of years, so it's been COVID and hurricanes or storms, we're never having that thing. Uh, but, you know, buildings in there have been old for a long while, you know, most of us have. Uh, but, you know, the best buildings in there are the four H buildings that were built, you know, the latest, some of them are the older one, uh, already need some repairs. But, uh, you know, the range obviously is used for a large part of the exhibition, but the other, the other, it only has some of the years of them, uh, and if we don't start replacing them now, uh, it gets, it's getting harder and harder to attract crowds for agricultural officials, because there aren't numerous many farmers around, but we had it one time. One time, you know, we replaced up now all our rooms, you know, and some that were burnt associated with those. Uh, and now it's the odd exception, and that's a burn. And so therefore, it's, it's harder to draw people, but it is important that we continue to draw people. Uh, or else we, we lose that connection that's needed between agriculture and the consumer. Uh, so I, I think it's a, a good plan on behalf of the agricultural society to own that plan uh, to locate construction, this building is, it may not be the last, it won't be the last one to be replaced over time, but uh, it's gonna be harder probably for those, everything starts to fall down. Need to have some, you know, modern buildings to exhibit and for the exhibitors as well. Uh, and that amount of exhibiting or the amount of exhibitors has gone down a lot over the last few years, or less in twenty years probably, and so we don't put in proper facilities, I think it's gonna be even harder uh, to attract exhibitors, those farmers of the day are changing a lot from what was in the past. It's not those small farmers trying to make a living off of a couple dozen head of cattle. It's, in fact, in many cases, a lot smaller farms that are popping up now, maybe living off a few acres, right? We need to make it so that they can exhibit their wares and, and be able to live on agriculture, yeah. So I'm totally in support of this, this project and, uh, you know, council had a lot of asks. Last year, we had way overboard the number of asks compared to the money that we had. And so you can't guarantee anything to anybody right now, and that it would be considered at the time when they, uh, when we meet, I think it ends on February twenty-eighth, so as long as the request is in by February twenty-eighth, it gets considered, the request is something, somebody's asked. So, uh, I, I think, uh, as you said, this council is always up favorably, thought for each hand, about exhibition, and so we'll hope for the best, but thank you for your request tonight and your presentation.
I would also like to comment on what you had said in regard to the project, there's no question about that. But exhibitions are not strong throughout the program. Either at the present moment. However, that is the only source that we have left. Try and promote agriculture to the public. And it is a huge challenge, there's no question of that. Can read stuff out of a book, read, you can study it on the computer, but not the same as walking on the ground and seeing. Why thank you, the opportunity.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack, for coming and Ben and Edward to talk about this project, this very worthwhile project. I have spoken to a group member the other day and I spoke about the new building, the four H building, the Centura, the, the new barn that they have, we had that barn, in fact, we have a perfect because they, they can put gates up, they, you can show cattle, you can show sheep, they're all in, they're outside of wash stations and the owners of the wash stations, they put the gates up and they, because they had auction in there, different things. But I, I certainly supported whole, wholeheartedly and wish you nothing but the very best. I, I can't understand how Pecto and any of these exhibitions, the people have to work so hard to scrape up money to to do what they have done over the last bunch of years and, and the proof is here what the four H and the community has done in Pecto. But in Tora, there's big bunches of money goes in, you can't see what was done with the money, because nothing's been done. But it just is that word that's called provincial, and that makes a difference, but I'm, I'm hoping that where we have three sitting members and Pecto County, that there'll be some help, come extra help to try to make it that much easier for everybody, so enjoy. Thank you.
Can I speak for one second, Ben?
Go ahead, lady.
In the sketch that I drew up for you, so you'll take notice that the thing is, the barn itself, if you walk through it, the last look at the build, is designed very plain. The barn and these sketches, that when the barn is built, the thing is, it's gonna be designed for sheep, cattle and horses. The front of the stalls, the posts in the center of the building is twelve feet apart, there's gonna be fronts built that clip on and are removable, where the track goes down to the end, you can have cattle in this barn in one weekend, horses in at the next, stall fronts with dick weights, which is all attached, too many, you can pick these fronts up, take them right off the front of these posts and put them down in a corner. Like, from one day to the next, cattle, sheep or whatever, sheep only need little things, cattle don't need nothing. Horses need stall fronts, that's what the barn's gonna be designed, it's just more than, it's more than just a plain barn, it's gonna be multi-purpose. An example, if you brought in the, the RCMP rise, you'll have twenty-eight or twenty-nine brand-new box stalls at any moment, right? So to house them, right? It's, it's not just cattle stalls, it's stalls, sheep boxes or box stalls, right?
It's also a park. I'm afraid that it definitely worked. You mentioned those sketches, we didn't get the sketch, that's all.
Pardon me?
We didn't get the sketch.
I have it here.
My question was, and maybe it was mentioned, what size is the?
Just thirty-two by a hundred and seventy-two. Or like David, on the, on the back, the same site.
Uh. I mean, probably, okay.
I've been in contact with a representative, if I guess, of the Beef Federation, they're gonna look into money, money there. I've been in contact with a gentleman who gave me a name for Sean Fraser's office, Ignite. No negotia. Um, and now that I have the, the finances, I'm gonna start, and I'm gonna start maybe even further in to see where we can get other funding.
Because I mentioned problems, it's, it's funding for agriculture.
Yeah.
Then we go to places like that.
I just wanted to have the, the, the numbers in hand so that when they say, I can ship them off and say, this is what I have.
The only thing us, the two fifty, is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the estimated cost?
That's cost everything, right down to electrical, plumbing, steel.
Building that, that big, we're building that big, that's, that's not a lot of money.
Well, I built houses all my life, but there's no inside, there's no insulation, no, there's not, it's just yourself.
It's in Westport, we're out.
But all allowing for cement and the center part and all that, but meaning rebar like that, right? But the thing is, the building on the outside is just hominized post, strapping and steel. Then on the inside, right on the strap, and the reboards six feet high, so the animals can't push the steel off, right? And then there's another road close to the inside, and then divided off of two by ten for stalls and to make box stalls, right? And basically, it's just open trusses, there's no strap, insulation, just a, just a barn structure, right? Exactly, and Tommy Doer said, electrical, what, electrical freedom, I've signed him up with a price for plumbing. So we, and then material, if you're gonna go over eleven, materials is scary part, like, I mean, building material, like the list is.
So, thanks very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks for having me. I'm done, I'm done.
Yes, same question here. I, uh, pleased to hear this presentation is seen. I can think back to when the, the beef farm was full of these animals and the dairy farm, there's dairy animals. And many farmers had show streams that contained from exhibition to exhibition, including Pecto. And farmers coming from BDI and different parts of the province. So all of that has changed, obviously, as we know. And the only, I guess, caution or suggestion that I would have is that if, if this is to be called a multi-purpose building, um, to be called a multi-purpose building, that you should strive to, to put your thin hats on and to, to build it for as many groups, whether, certainly all the livestock groups you've mentioned, but maybe there are other groups, such as craft group, craft groups or vegetable groups, that would want to, to come to this building as well, and maybe that should be part of your thinking and part of your promotion. That's, that's it to comment.
Yes, that is true. As you have said, the showing of cattle and, and its chain. The chain graph is when the festival department picks up on the cattle, it's a period, a period of entry of cattle and horses. But on the other hand, time has been the factor of being away from home now more than ever, but we still have to try and create something that, deliver that back to the general public of the value of life. Of course, the building, people are offended to help each other. If by the building's underground, so I really doubt again, I think that on a broad scale, you are correct. That is a major problem as any government, tired to have the mobility to support other sectors of the public. And anyway, just try and survive, create, keep, keep, and be going.
Best was standing relaxed and happy, still got four, four people that want to ask questions, so don't run away.
I may not have something else.
Uh, Derek, you next?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Morton. I guess my question was answered, I was asking about the barn, asking if it's just as good for beef or multi-purpose use, and I think it's a great thing because to hear that it's going to be for multi-purpose use, because you don't never want to put limits on yourself, and what he'd use for in the public facilities, you're kind of future-proof it, but I suppose that's, that's a really good thing. So, yeah, no, I think this is great, I think you need to get ahead of things, and it's always a big support agriculture here in the county, so.
Thanks, Derek.
Hey, Derek? Yeah, I do want to thank Jack and all of the men, recommend this project. Most of us want that, or other, the dead, for tall, but certainly have seen that building, the other buildings, and will know that they're figured out of that place. I do have a question, have you approached what is called the Mendes Culture Heritage Barn?
That's on our to-do list.
That is on our to-do list. In my mind, evidently, this is not your project, it's about building our community, it's about our culture, our cultural history, and it's not just agriculture, and it's about our heritage in some ways as well. It just seems like an ideal fit, although they tend to watch and support more urban buildings, this, this one, in my mind, is an ideal fit. And I want to compliment the Exhibition Committee, first of all, for surviving the cold, and the hurricane that came before that. But they've also looked on the some lengths of moving away from just agriculture. Yep. And I know there's some criticism, but having been slight, uh, the demo's very recent, but the, the best probably for the listeners, but that's where many of our rural people are, not on farms at all. They live in the country, they have a, a mother trap where they have ATBs or whatever, that's part of their recreation, so I know it's not always popular, the committee, because it's not really very agricultural, but it is very much a part of culture, but you're not, but lots of compliment, a lot of accepting. And that's part of, you know, keeping viable, you let people through the door, pay the bills. Have you considered this new building, it's quite a, quite a lot of space? I know that there is a demand for storing our bees from the end of October to middle of May. Have you considered that option, held them?
The building itself right now is very low ceiling. It, Jack takes a tractor up from the farm to put our picnic tables and store each noise on, we can't, and wait till the horse pulls, because if we don't put anything inside, it sort of disappears, right? But the thing is, we're going to make it higher. Right now, we're going to use sixteen-foot post, maybe end up on thirteen-foot ceiling. The thing is, which, which is same height might be known there, yes, then it will take maybe RVs, tractor trailers, things like that. But the thing is, the way the building is laid out in the property, it's hard to get in the indoor, there's only so much room between them two buildings, right? It's hard to get in the side door, you're already backing in thirty-two feet, you can't turn a pair of ninety degrees. But as far as storing other oddball things, yeah, but then again, you've got to put security on that stuff, right?
And insurance.
Like, but if Johnny was here, you'd tell you, see, Johnny and his man put two-by-ten pre-stated lumber on the bleachers and bolted it down, they went back the next day, and then bank are gone. So the thing is, we haven't taken, we can't afford cameras, nothing. We built it, we picked it, so we leave something outside, I even discussed with the week's construction, taking the gravel down, we said, can we use a tractor trailer as soon as a single truck? I said, a single truck can back, so you dump it and half spray it, so I don't have to spend the cost of level minutes. Well, I said, we put it out in the middle of the yard, and I disappeared, might happen to be gone, because people come and have to touch the data. If I can't get it in eleven, pack, we'll take it, so just things like that, right?
Thank you.
Storage is a good thing, if we can get it high enough and accessible.
Um, I just want to congratulate you guys for all the stuff they've done so far, and I think the committee that's working on this PBR ingredients, I think it's good, it's a good project. And I'm concerned that without having this, 4H might not have a place to actually have all the events that they have, and children have a future. And there's a lot of people that don't have the opportunity to go around farms, and there's people and children that never get to be around farm animals. So the education that people can get just by being around the exhibition, if there's nothing like that. And I, I think it's wonderful that you're, you want to better the place so that we can keep it going. And if this new barn will help events, like you mentioned, the RCMP and the horses, how many more events could you have because of this new barn? That's what we need, and thanks for being here.
Thanks, Derek.
Um, just one question, and I apologize if you, you answered it before, before I asked it, but when were you hoping to break ground on this? This summer or next summer?
Well, we're hoping to break down the spring in the way of the thing. Arizona barners have been in the last two summers, and if we started this spring, then we would do that revenue. The other side of the coin is, we don't want to start, it's ungood advice. Everybody's concerned, probably some game lost on the picture, and of course, it's still on the picture. But when we did have an exhibition for two and a half years, it's because in nineteen, we got beat up with the hurricane, and we don't even have an exhibition. And the losses from the donations that we had received wouldn't have been able to survive over COVID nineteen. And I think his concern was in twenty-two, that we didn't know how the public would react to coming out again after, told to stay at home and pay to stay at home, some circumstances, but there was not a support or so. But anyway, that's another issue. But we had a great response from the general public, twenty-two, and encouraged us a bit to move forward. In regard to David's questions, and he said, it is true, these other functions that have triggered into the agriculture sector have drawn cards. As David's saying, there's a standard of living of the countryside, but anyway, that's another area, so they're not too popular in the town of Pecto, I make the truth. However, you do back to storage, but to the assemblies we have, we don't have a big enough volume of space to store things due to like the limited insurance and fire insurance. So over the years, we did store a little bit of stuff. Do you want to know the truth, it was illegally. Now, at the present time, it's on the waste now. And I am characters of what they've created and what I've done. I've been connected to the exhibitions since two years, and things have changed a lot, I believe, it changed a hundred percent, there's a lot of areas. The name is Council, still at the top of my list. So regardless of what they praise, as well, as a council will always be on my foot, I thank you for the opportunity of being here today, and appreciate you being here.
Can I answer your question there? With the date, we were talking, Jack and I were talking the other night that we had a review, we were thinking maybe right after the exhibition, we start taking down a new building, and, and hopefully head it up before the snow hits, and use the insider for the story or lumber that we're going to get, and on the winter times, build all the stalls during the winter months in out of the road. That's what I'm thinking. That's when I'm quieter at work, and I got more time spent there with men, as opposed to the summertime, but like Jack answered your question first there, we're going to lose revenue if we take it down now, in the spring, right? There's the exhibition coming, and a bit's not ready, no place for the horse to put his cab, exactly, so. And last year, I think a year and a half ago, we were talking at an exhibition meeting, beef cattle coming and, and that, and I went to, mentioned the George Crater, Adam, and all those people in, and Paul McKenzie, and I hit ten farmers, that they had taken five cattle each, ten farmers. But we're still, our facility's still not capable of handling that, but once we get the new facility and looking pretty nice, there's no problem with cattle, all you've got to do is go and ask these fellows, like, there's all these different breeds, Ewan Cameron's daughter, the roadmaid, they got short horn, people got, Paul McKenzie got Galloways, all these people doing cattle, that's what the kids and people like, right? Yes, we can put cattle in, it's just not asking, you've got to have a nice facility for them to come, right? Exactly, and I think our starting time would be right after the exhibition, that's your question.
So, I really do have one question. Since you were just here, I think it's, it's been a while, fast, a minute ago, but it's important to write something about it. Johnny's name, you know, because he, Jack was getting asked something eight years ago, Jack had developed the exhibition, but it wasn't yesterday, but certainly Johnny Roxton's putting his time there to, the exhibition really wouldn't be still going today, but was before, it's time to finish, we could put a whole lot into this every year, and others who already went with us anymore are putting a lot to keep it going. But I had one question, and that was on, as Professor Palmer mentioned, and I agree that two hundred and fifty thousand sounds low, how, how much, you know, in terms of, of labor, build this building, how, how much of that's going to be in-kind labor, and is there going to be a contract to build this building, and how, how's that going to be?
Well, there's no contractor. It depends on volunteer labor, that's everything else. Volunteers is not what you mean, and I hate to say it that way, that's why the president of Congress is looking. We attempt to keep the, the, the again, be able to put a, a place into, carry forward into the picture.
To, sorry, to our advantage, I know this year hurricane's an awful thing, but there's trees laying down everywhere, and there's people that's trying, you know, offering logs, but we've got to go get to them and cut them, and I nailed two people down that we can get the logs taken to one certain spot, having three or four bandsaws line up, and start cutting two-by-tens, that's a big expense. Big two-by-tens are in between stalls and stuff, that's a big bit, right? So like, people out in River John, there's people, Pleasant Valley, Paul McKenzie, a lot, if people will donate a half a load of logs here and there everywhere, that's going to help a lot, we can nail that down, and get these fellows to solve that for us, exactly.
No contractor, mostly volunteers?
Basically, yes.
Okay, no doubt, thank you.
Okay, I thank very much for covering up your presentation, and certainly look at your following post to the grant committee in, or some, or some, and then get out of the most. Okay, thank you very much. Hey, number three, the poor stories, subdivision process, everyone's lost, perhaps, Jeremy, you want to step up to the mic? I was going to hear what you did.
Good evening, folks. So I'm Jeremy, for those who haven't heard yet, for those that I have, that I see, I'm the development officer, and my primary role is land division, looking at new opportunities for policy development moving forward in the future. If we have any questions to my role?
What is your role?
What is my role? So as the development officer, I take the applications for land subdivision for people that want to parcel off, have an acre, three acres, that's related for future development. The process involves a land surveyor to submit application after surrendering a portion of lands that they wish to settle from an existing land plot, and that's, and for my process, I review, I file with Land Administration, Department of Environment, Department of Transportation, and ourselves. Once all the governments are through, and the permission approved, and the application is granted.
Well, you're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, and I, I just wanted to, we hope to have Jeremy in here just to introduce some of the BA as well. Jeremy's filling the role that Jeff Turnbull used to fulfill with the municipality, as a development officer. Twenty years ago, the town, New Glasgow indicated that, if you're Turnbull, you'd be working on a strictly classroom, so we looked at, we posted this job, Jeremy's been with us for every year, just moved, it's been nine and a half months now. So since he's been here, we've been doing all of our own subdivision process in-house, I've gathered some of the new ones individually. We've also been looking to advance items related to, and just planning, getting our subdivision process in place, picture, much of the, the permission agency, other jurisdictional stories, I agree with you, as well, which used to be us in this building. And Jeremy, also, Jeremy comes to us from Eastfield back, I mean, Ontario, Fish and Ontario, and does contract work for the town of Westfield. And Contra SS originated transportation plan, transportation engineering plan, they've been involved with, approvals, the approval process, in a, a different system than we currently have, but something more similar, but we'll have, planning this together. So there's some advantages there as well, with, with, there's certain piece value of roads and private roads, the basic subdivision process, also, through the process of, as better part of the year, we've really gone back to looking at our, our current bylaws and policies, and looking at interpretation, that we're trying to get to a point of, you know, really sort of meeting those requirements of living up to the spirit as was getting done. And I would say that the process has, has been going very well, and, you know, seen quite a few subdivisions, we had a vote, a hundred out of the table last year, under the process, every participation is just, with a growing population, I think this is the perfect time to be, scan stuff and have a signal, a little over as well. So that served, I want to say, with Jeremy, his role here, it's been, it's worked so well, over to additional development of policies.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I have a specific question. Jeremy, what is your understanding? When, uh, lots are being subdivided for residential purposes, when, when do they not go to the proper environment?
Um, let's see, that's interesting, that's kind of motive. With, with current regulations, we can avoid sending the application for review to the Department of Environment based on the lot size itself. You know, if it's greater than, you know, as an estimate, two and a half acres. And it's not encumbered by any one area or known one area, we can kind of avoid the Department of Environment for review process at that time. However, the application is defined as deemed not development at this time. It's just for the purpose of parceling out. And then future owner does buy a parcel of land, they will be subject to Department of Environment requirements if sanitary is required. While a smaller lot here, if it's serviced by a municipal or services such as sanitary, it wouldn't have to be reviewed by the Department of Environment.
Oh, I have subdivision to one three, or as one three one of them acres. And they can have to put it to a visiting floor. Why not for a purpose, but sort of, then it becomes a responsibility of the purchaser. Before they can get available, or that they have it's just that in past, they've covered around a lot of it. But that, I mean, not that they were, they're difficult, but they were particularly slow. So we tried to get them to go off the ground, maybe head seal or a lot or two. Took some three months, but get that done. So that's my second follow-up question that I made, Mr. Chair. Typically, to divide off a lot or two, uh, what kind of time do I have to look at?
Generally, I give the estimate of about six months for a completion to end. Um, and that usually deals with, with some minor issues that need to be addressed through the, through the process, updated, you know, uh, reports that have to be provided to the Department of Environment uh, from a venture regarding the subject that's being proposed for the site. Uh, but generally, they fall within that six months. Usually that's the max. That's still really complicated, or their tentative plan, that process takes longer with review from the Department of Transportation, Department of Environment, everybody that has stake and comments.
I've gone through it, while it wasn't, two years ago, I mean, just chair. Well, they would give you the paperwork, they either, well, actually, it's fine, that's why I thought that. And you could ferry it around with these various permits, therefore speed that up. Otherwise, if those are permanent A, they take their time to approve it, they not do the time to file. And it gets sent over B, same thing, or C, so it can take a very long time. Sometimes you have a land transaction where you go with them, you know, they can hold that. But I'm not doing that anymore. But, um, Jeff can already pretty good, you know, the good service to move them along if you're asked to move them along as quick as possible. Especially those of men and sale. That, that is one of the concerns that I've heard, Mr. Wilson, is it's taking too long. So, oh, but, um, if you can do things to, I'm actually in the short process of, you know, skip steps, but I am actually pushing as long as quick as possible.
So the Department of Environment and Department of Transportation, as well as us, have a ninety day window to respond to the original application in circulated, you know, from there, those things have to be addressed, and usually there's a timeline associated from them back to the applicant.
On the neighborhood law, so the term is not a petition. They're not required until someone advises them to post their building. That's probably not wrong, but the, yeah, I'm well aware, they're ninety days. If you take them off, they'll think you're not an actor. But at the same time, in order to move business along, you know, try to keep it as short as possible. Because they used to be able to take all three of them. And they'd all work on it, I mean, I had one that was a long time ago, but I think we had it done. But they went to alternate the same day, it's the asked, oh yeah, it's very good. But anyway, that's, and that's because the yield has changed at the end. My answer was kind of in this state, one proposal state and so on, for pressure. But anyway, that's one of those things I've heard about lot sizes and about speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Jeremy Gordon, I didn't realize the name was more of an introduction than anything, but I, I wanted to, uh, perhaps you could enlighten us a little bit here, man. Uh, you've been here, I think, ten months now, I think it was it. Uh, the types of challenges that you had over that period of time. You know, no matter what job you're in here or anywhere, there's always, uh, you know, the other thing is in dealing with people sometimes, and we all, we have this minimal planning, you know, it's pretty simple. That's probably cause definitely more problems, I think, you know. People have their way out of this town, we do, we're climbing in the past. Uh, and I just wanted to get your feelings on what is the length of those eight or ten months? Uh, you, you came from a different environment, obviously you came up here, you came from expectations somewhat. So in, in dealing with the people, uh, what types of challenges, are there challenges to do with the neighboring ground, really, sometimes? Are there challenges to do with, as my brother said, invisible, hurry it up? Uh, what, what types of challenges have you run into? Uh, I don't want individuals to have, but in general, uh, you know, over that period of time, it can be brought here.
So to, to address that, I, I don't really know that there's like an extenuating challenge that continually occurs. There are some things that come up and they're similar to each other, and that is, one is that an applicant may have a prospective buyer for a parcel of land if they give off a tentative close date or sixty days from today. Not realizing that the timeline typically takes a little longer than that sixty days. And that's not from necessarily our workload or our review process or our filing process. That's the other agencies, so the, you know, special Department of Environment or the Transportation, being able to provide a compliment in that manner. So that usually is where there's a discrepancy and, you know, so frustration by the applicant wanting an application to be sped out and that is out of my control. So there's some, you know, there's some heartache there with, with the applicant. The other thing is, is that the interpretation of, of such documents, living documents that we have, such as the, the land use pilot that we have in place, or the subdivision pilot, which is almost like there's some subtleties that are different in it from what is actually written in the NPA. However, our interpretation of it is different than, say, past employees that we still look at and have given, you know, a way to certain requirements. With us moving forward in the future with the land use planning by law uh, to designate lands for certain types of developments, so we can grow. Uh, I think some of those, those challenges are being faced today, but they will increase until everything is settled and everything's approved. Once, once the surveys and the applicants continually apply uh, application for land severance here or sub duty. They are all very accustomed to how we're looking at things, Logan, myself, in this, in this municipality. And are very comfortable with our approach because we maintain consistency to that approach. It hasn't, we were, it stayed the same. So I think that was the other challenge at the beginning. It's not as challenging today as it was early on with, with interpretation, sir.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Jeremy, any further questions? Thank you very much.
Your turn.
I guess, what are your respects to the process?
Like the show, Chris May, it's a lot of time.
Uh, good evening, Tom, thank you for having me here. For those of you that don't know me, my name, in this whole project, I think, I'm failing on. Try and give just like a brief summary of my background and who I am and what my job is and what, uh, what I actually turned it into. I've been involved in emergency services since, what, nineteen, I thought. Do a search and rescue and that sort of thing for a number of years. I've been in the fire service for over twenty years. Uh, a few of those years, I was paid on a call, volunteered firefighters, kind of aware of my volunteer fire parts work around here. And, uh, just over eighteen years as a career firefighter for the city in that period. Prior to being a firefighter, uh, I had a background in construction. I did a couple of years of plumbing, and then after that, I became a chairman of red seal electrician. Uh, so a lot of this background really definitely helped me for, uh, doing my fire inspections, that's what I'm saying, it's pretty smart, I'm a fire, fire background. Um, as a career firefighter, I spent most of my time as a suppression firefighter. So being in fire companies and under normal daily duties, we, uh, we got to go around and do a lot of inspections throughout our district, uh, on a regular basis. So over eighteen plus years, I've probably been back to hundreds of, of inspections of various different types of activities, from multi-family residential to large commercial, to market catalog, excuse me, that sort of thing. I've also been involved, uh, in multiple different specialties. Um, I was CPR instructor for a number of years. I was a hazmat technician for a young video when you know, nasty chemicals ready to make you glow and that sort of thing. Um, I was a firewood operator for about ten years. Um, I was a, uh, uh, mental health instructor for first responders. And, uh, the last year and a bit, I worked as a fire investigator. Um, helping to investigate cause origin of structured fire incidents. Um, the courses that I have to help, uh, give you credit for what I'm doing here now, um, was known as FIP one thousand one, which is the standard for, uh, for a firefighter. Uh, I've got the NPA ten thirty three, which is a standard that's for our investigations. And my NPA ten thirty one, which is, uh, requirements, uh, for a, a fire inspector now. For those of you who don't know what NPA is, NPA is National Fire Administration Association, which uh, is a recognized association by even the, the Canadian National Fire Code, the Canadian National Building Code. It's a, it's a set standard of how things are supposed to be done, or what sort of training standards that we need. So that's basically me in that shell. Um, so my job's here, uh, as a fire inspector, so, um, for people, for those of you that may not have been aware, uh, the Northern Scottish Fire Safety Act actually requires that municipality have, um, not only a, a fire inspector, but they also have to have systematic uh, system of conducting inspections within their jurisdiction of all the offices that require regular inspections. Uh, short of dwellers, I don't have the authority, there's still an alternative one, inspection of this house. But most of, unless it's a provincial building, most of the other buildings in this, in this county will be under my jurisdiction, so I do regular inspections. So not only do I have to conduct these inspections of all these, uh, offices, but I also have to record them and keep a, um, keep records of all the inspections, things that have happened. Um, and this system of records also has to be something that's accepted by the Northern Scottish Fire Marshal's Office. Um, because when, if there is a, a contravention or some sort of fire safety issue in an address or in a property occupancy, um, whenever I issue, what we call is an order to have that, uh, problem solved. Uh, I have to submit those orders to the Fire Marshal's Office so they understand what's being done, because of course those occupancies will have the ability to appeal that, and the rest of the appeal is going to the Fire Marshal's Office. I guess the main thing, the main purpose of, of having a fire inspector is, uh, my job is to go through our county and fire safety for not only, you know, the, um, the people that are within these occupancies, the staff members or the residents that are in these occupancies, and for the public and even for firefighters that may have to go into that building and fight a fire. A lot of these, uh, fire codes that are established aren't just simply there to keep the people safe that are living in it. They're designed to keep firefighters safe when a place actually passed on fire. So I have to look at all those sorts of things and, and have a pretty firm grasp on the fire code. Um, to be able to see if there's any, if there are any, uh, contradictions to the building. So I've been with, uh, municipality, local county now for about five, five-ish weeks, six weeks, something like that. So in that time, uh, it's been a bit of a challenge, um, because an actual compiled list of occupancies that are what I call inspectable didn't exist or doesn't exist. So I had to break down the county, uh, in a way that makes sense to me. I broke it down into all the fire response districts that this county has, all the, you know, volunteer boroughs. And I've literally been driving up and down every single those little districts and jogging down the addresses and compiling a list of all these buildings that have so I haven't actually reached the point yet of starting inspections. Because like I said, the other thing we have to do is we have to keep records of them. So we're also, um, in the process of researching, um, an appropriate software program that we can use to, um, save all these inspections and how can we just inspect, but actually provide what we would call a pre-fire plan of that building, uh, for example, like, let's say this building in particular, I would uh, not have full measurements of the building, but I would mark down where there's hazardous rooms for fire groups that would be responding, especially to a fire in here. And all that sort of stuff, and it'd even have records of previous incidents at that building, that sort of stuff. And even though there isn't an immediacy for all this information, but it gives the municipality the potential, hopefully, the program we would get, and give the municipality the potential to grow um, and provide all this information for incoming fire crews, so they would have that on them before they even show up to the scene. You know, what it's, they're taking themselves into. So as of now, uh, I guess I that's pretty much what I'm working on right now, is just a software and lists. Um, I plan to go around to all the volunteer boroughs in the county. Uh, initially, so myself, or initially myself to them, just like I'm doing right now. And hopefully find out what their needs are, their district, then I'll offer any help to them that I can, and, you know, as a resource to them. And, uh, in the future, I'm hoping to, instead of just being, fire inspection is only one small part of prevention. I've been in the fire service for a very long time, and that's one thing that you know is fire prevention is the most important part of firefighting and fire service, is just less avoid the fire from ever happening. So that comes down to public education, that comes down to, um, get inspections, and it also comes down to fire investigations, which makes a whole fire prevention program. So hopefully we can start developing something like that. So in that show, anybody has some questions for me here?
Thank you, thanks very much. That was always good.
Thank you very much.
We welcome, yeah.
Yeah, happy to be here.
Uh, okay, well, questions, uh, Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, CJ.
Jason?
Jason, yes. I certainly have an impressive list of qualifications. We have had fire inspectors, uh, the last twenty years or so, Kevin always spent, uh, practical days with the county. The one concern I have is that stop the buildings of inspector. Not in particular with churches, church halls, community halls. They tend to be more than church halls. Uh, if you live on a long list, there in over back thirty days, they're going to the soccer. We did have a fire inspector years ago now, who had the type of personality where he, when I was dealing with seniors, I would leave them. And he'd also identify five or six or seven problems that they have to work on. They hear the worst one. And then, you know, when they think he gets to that, I think this one over here. So in other words, he was willing to work with those people, and that worked better. But we had one after that, it was the second type, just this list, back in thirty days. I think you should, we didn't do a whole lot of that list. In other words, you have to work with them, get their cooperation and recognize that they're, they're working very, very good at these. I'm not a guy to look at martial establishments. This building, this building's not a party that you have to run. Uh, no, but seriously, they're, they're commerce, they're in business. No, but seriously, they're farmers that are in business. They should, you know, talk about their. Fire protection plan, fire code, but they're in a problem. Mentioned maybe all church halls, you know, just. But they don't have any money. They don't even have time to open the doors. And just ask you, keep that in mind, you know. You can quickly assess, I'm sure, if you're not on experience. You know, how much. How much ability there is to remedy things like that. That's, that's my only, only concern. That if you use a process, you know, with those groups that. Have their own enemies. Some of them will come here. Because they know they've got to be coping, they're asking for help. They have helped, many physically helped mostly through municipal service events. That that will continue to be a challenge, I'm sure.
Thank you for the information and also welcome an excursion.
Thank you. I guess for what you're saying, that you're not the first one to bring that up to me. And myself. I have zero intention of being that person that's going to come in and be authoritarian and tell them how everything has to be done. I don't want them to know how. That's, that's. That's not how I work, and it's not how I plan to work. If there is an absolute. If it's three days of danger, like immediate danger, I would have no choice but to have to deal with that at that moment. But a lot of the times, yeah, I hundred percent agree. I wouldn't look at. The building that I'm working with and let's deal with the immediate risks and what's within their their abilities to remedy as quickly as possible. And, you know, and if we give them time, like, we can work, we can come up with a plan. If I just ask them and say, okay, this year we achieve this. Next year, we achieve this. Because some of these occupancies, like American tile occupancy, they're based on. The county's own bylaws. American tiles are five years. Check. So. If in that five years, so to let certain things go for five years is a very long time. So, if we can, you know, slowly create a plan to remedy certain things without, and I agree, I don't want to go in and shut businesses down. The churches and a lot of the halls. I'm also bound by the Nova Scotia Fire Safety Act that states that I can only. Instills. The rules based from the day they were built. So, like their grandfather, that certain times they're built, I can make recommendations. To say, I would strongly recommend that maybe you park these exits. I would recommend they have fire extinguishers. I'm not going to say you need a firewall system, you need to have dampers, you don't have all these sorts of things, a pre-fire plan set up. Because you're right, like, these are buildings that are running on next to nothing. And that would, that would be shut. I have no intention to do that.
Deal with so. Deal with, Peter?
I'm the district now, and I know you're not so good work out there and for that. But beyond there can help us with the way they're involved. And so. I've really, really been hearing really the things about you, and it's nice to.
Oh, thank you. It's nice to hear.
Thanks, Gary. Debbie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jason. Good to have you today. Good to hear your biography. It's quite impressive, I think. And it's nice to see. Such an active, vibrant person in this position. Are we able to the idea of the software packaging, inspections, and so on, this work required, the management sheet, it's certainly actually really important, especially to prevent the fires that happen? I guess the one concern in our area, years ago, our community center wasn't studied, and they had a list of. And the problem was not that they didn't want to make the, they didn't really understand why they had to make. Why they had fixes or bringing up to this, and we're going to nation over there, we're going to work with folks for, so I guess. If when the inspection event is done, what needs to be done, make sure it's clear, then why, then what work needs to be done, and why they need to do it. It's about five, you've got a lot of possible things that try to figure out. What had to be done, why we should have a lot of communication between personnel, the fire inspection, and the government, and the government received the. Other than that, I guess, it's one of the big concerns we have in our areas.
For me, my feeling is, like. I would prefer to educate before I have to divorce. And if anybody ever asks questions about an order that is issued or has any concerns. Hopefully, I get that question asked of people in there. But, yeah, I don't, like, for anybody, I'll let Nova Scotia reach out to me at any time with that clarification.
I think that with the air, sort of, in here, is that personally, it's outside the system.
Oh, okay.
That was interesting. I raised with Lisa, or did you know that?
Okay.
Welcome, Jane. As Mr. said, there is a, not only our county, but our municipality. I'm glad to have you aboard. We've hired some good people over the last while, and. Need, obviously, if we don't have, you know, listing of the buildings affected, that's almost the first. What's my deal, one of the buildings, actually, the character. But I was impressed too with your. Past experience, particularly being an electrician, a plumber at one time, and also the mental health researcher. That's, that's always important, no matter what work you're doing. But all of that kind of gives you a better background, I think, if you believe those local buildings and, you know, where the wire. The one concern I wasn't bringing up, because it's been many probably, but they've come up over time. You mentioned about safety of the firefighters going to the fire.
Yes.
And at one time, in our district or area anyway, I'm a student of fire, considering. As a firm, you had to submit a drawing of your property of all the buildings, where they were and everything, and the rooms, whatnot. And in that had to be, had to show any danger points. You know, in a chemical storage area, in turn three, when they arrived, they had that drawing. To know, okay, it isn't in that area, but it is, we've got a terrible chemical stored in there. And I was thinking of what happened back here. Personally, back last week, you know, the family, you know, propane business, you know, three people, because of the explosions, I don't think they found out what happened, they were positive, but. When firefighters go in, now, in that case, it was the firefighters who were working there. And they go into an area, especially now we're putting more generators in, you have more propane tanks around people buildings, and. But the firefighters, when they arrive, in most cases, don't prove at all, but what's stored where. What might be, that has to stay away from. So, I was just wondering where that fits. If that ever, you know, that could be on a computer screen now, when you're going to a fire, and so you're going to exhibit a blow-in rover or something, and. Bang, you have to come, so there's a problem. We're going to, and that's the file we do.
That is the plan. So, we were originally trying to see if we can just work with panel sweep and program that we already have for what we're doing. And that program had really old room for growth. It's already a twenty-year-old piece of software that certainly carries that one. We are, there's a few that we're looking at at the moment. And most of them have that ability where not only will I enter in all the owner information and that sort of thing, but I can actually. They link to, say, Google Earth, it will have a Google Earth map, and I put little marks where the hazardous chemicals are in a particular barn. Or where the electrical room is in a particular building, or that sort of thing. So, and yes, they already design that for the. The rocket responding apparatus. They potentially could have a laptop or a tablet in their rig. And, yeah, when they get dispatched, bang, that address comes up, and they can go through all the different tabs. And see the information that they need to see while they're on route. So, they can start developing a, an action plan before they even get there. So, these are things, and I think we're a little ways from there yet, but. We are looking at programs that can give us that ability to get there when we.
Does that fall under your permit, your job, or if you're doing building stuff, I've done with businesses, firms and stuff. That said, who does that fall out here?
I honestly, I'm trying to answer that question right now. I don't really know. It's like I said, my, my office and this kind of program is still, it's kind of at the. Foundation right now. We're trying to build it. So, I would have to speak with Evan Hale and see where we want this to go and what we want it to do. I hundred percent agree. I have looked at farms, because I'm not a city boy. I came from city firefighting. So, seeing, dealing with farms is new to me. So, I need to find out where those fall in under the type of occupancies and whether they're respectable for me or not. And then we also have to determine where the development of the green plants, if that falls under my portfolio, or if that falls under, we don't know. So, those are the things that we're actually trying to do.
It's, Mr. Chair, it's not just farms. I think of all the small businesses around it, except the tank storage and, you know, explosive materials that are around that. You just take it for granted after, you know, when they're there for a long time. In some cases, they've been there too long. They've almost rested themselves. They're in danger, but. So, I'm sure working with them, and as you can come up with a plan, I don't know how they did it, over the twenty years, I think he's had a drawing at the fire.
He's had a little follow, so he just kind of takes the follow, grab that address.
Change to the red paper, and then they have something to do with it, because it's fired down so and so square. Thank you, Mike.
I was just wondering, Chris, are you going to be also overseeing the firefighting and stuff like that?
I'm not sure. I don't know where they're at for the servicing of them, whether that's, I don't know if that's operations that deals with that, or if that falls under. The fire strike, right? That's the question. Sorry.
We had a, we had a situation with fire, I didn't know with fire, where it was.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But it's just a, we've done a little sketch for them to show where it was, but I was just wondering that. To check, like, the, you know, these, I've heard sometimes that I had two of my area weren't even working. And, and, you know, they, it was brought to my attention, and, you know. It was about that, and then you have, it was about that, in a way, you know, just whether that can send the order for, that.
You know what? I'll find the support.
Oh, thank you.
Logan wants to answer that question.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah. Everybody here, that's something that currently falls under our public works group, so. But with, in a relationship with either the service department as well. So, that's something, it goes out of sight, you mentioned. I can discuss with me, if any, myself as well. So, that is something that we can handle.
So, again, there's no further question?